There is an enormous amount of focus and attention on the behavior of law enforcement. I mean, it's intense and volatile, but at the same time, something that you have to handle and deal with. So what adjustments have you made recently within the L.A. Sheriff's Department to sort of manage all of this attention?
Well, we just have all of our personnel just aware of what they're doing at all times. And it's, you hate to have people working with their head on a swivel, but there's things coming from every single direction. And we just have to be mindful in terms of the impact that our activities are with the community, making sure the deputies stay safe out there, doing the right thing. And we're constantly criticizing what we're doing, getting that feedback, making sure the folks out on the field understand the impact of what they're doing.
Controversial decisions are definitely part of any position of responsibility. Are you surprised by the vitriol or the drama that surrounds some of the things that you say and do?
Well, it's kind of disappointing that people somehow can say, "I'm lying, I must be lying." You know, it's a favorite line. "He's not telling the truth." And when I was a deputy, when I was a sergeant on the department, I spoke truth to power in the most oppressive environment possible, which is under the administration of Lee Bach and Paul Tanaka, who are both federal inmates as we speak. And they really knew how to destroy careers. And I didn't care, because I came across corruption, cheating, I pointed it out, I put it in writing, I said, "I'm not going to participate, and this is going to lead to the downfall of the organization." I was laughed at, ridiculed, isolated, pretty much sent to the Gulag. But I realized it was more important to me, my credibility, my integrity, than to buy into a corrupt system, the good old boy crowd.
In terms of recruitment, you have approximately 630 retirees. Are you worried about being able to garner the talent you need to continue with community safety?
We expect that we're going to continue to hire the best and the brightest to come, and we're hiring locally, not out of state anymore. We want our local kids to grow up to become deputies serving their own communities. We're going to raise our minimum education level in January 1st to an associate's degree.
Oh.
And I think we're going to be the first largest, large organization to do that. And so we're going to have a supply of very good candidates from now into the future.
Are you incorporating additional things into training once that happens in terms of sensitivity and de-escalation and all of those hot topic buttons that are...
All those hot topic buttons that politicians are jumping on the bag when to say, "We are already doing those things." Implicit bias training, we have a lot of de-escalation training, we have a crisis intervention training, and a lot to do with, you know, dealing with the homeless, for example, with the mentally ill. We're constantly training. What kills us, though, is when there's a budget crisis, the first thing they get sacrificed is training.
Hmm.
And that's the thing where we need the most, and we need to meet more of it. So we're kind of robbing Peter to the pay-pall to see where we can get the training to happen, and let's see what happens.
All right, last word. What are you most proud of in your term so far? You've been on board since 2018. What are you most proud of what you've been able to do?
I think the permanent ban on ICE is an important achievement. I think the body cameras, those are two big campaign promises that I fulfilled. So we're well on our way to achieve all of the campaign promises I set out, because I want to make sure I did what I set out to do, which is to serve the community, make it safer for everyone.
Join Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, Mayor Eric Garcetti, and City Attorney Mike Fuhr for a special dialogue entitled "Standing Up Against Hate." The online event will take place on Friday, September 18th, at 12:00 p.m. and will feature leaders in the L.A. transgender and non-binary community. "Standing Up Against Hate" will discuss strategies to combat the rise of incidents locally. Check it out on lacityview.org/live. Councilmember Gil Sadio is hosting domestic violence workshops for anyone who is a victim or may know someone who is. These workshops are in multiple languages and are happening throughout September into October, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. For more information, visit facebook.com/cmgilcedio. The Latino Theater Company will be streaming an archival recording of "This of Man's World", written and performed by Sal Lopez. The production is billed as a solo semi-autobiographical coming-of-age story. Streamings are set through September 17th. Visit thelatac.org for more information. And that's a look at some virtual things to do.
Not sure who to contact in Los Angeles when you have to? Request bulky item pickup? Graffiti removal? Report animal-related services? Notify the city of illegal dumping? Pothole repair? Street sweeping? Find city resources? Pay your LA DWP bill? And so on, and so on, and so on. Well, thanks to the updated MyLA311 app, you have the answer to all your questions in the palm of your hand. Just visit the App Store on iOS or the Google Play Store on Android and download the free MyLA311 app. How does it work? Well, let's take a bulky item, for example. It's way too big to fit in your car, right? Just open up the app, touch the "Create a Service Request" tab, and this takes you to the "Create Service Request" page. Under "Popular Service Requests," right on top of the list is bulky items. Touch the tab and a new window opens up. If the item does not belong to you, touch the "No" button and fill out the required information. Check this out: You can hold and drag to move the pin, or enter the street address or intersection below. Moving the pin is handy when the location needed does not quite match up to the nearest address or intersection, such as along park trails, the L.A. River, or on vacant lots. Hit the "Done" button when you are ready to move forward. Our new MyLA311 system will now inform you of other open service requests at the same location to avoid taking duplicate requests. Next, touch "Details." You'll notice there's quite a selection of bulky items to choose from. Once the item and quantity are selected, you can help us by providing even further details by touching the select location of the item. You can even add more than one item to this service request. Once all the items are added, touch "Done." If you haven't registered for an account, we'll talk more about that in just a bit. You can enter your contact info or choose to submit anonymously. Next, you can add a photo by taking one using the app or by using an existing picture on your phone. It's especially helpful to city departments if you include comments about hard-to-find locations such as "next to this address in the vacant lot under the palm tree." You'll notice a targeted service date has just been added. This is the date you will need to have your bulky items out on the curb by 5:00 a.m., if not out already. Then, all you need to do is hit "Submit" and confirm your service request, and you're done. A service request number will pop up. From here, you can create another request for this or another location, return to the homepage, or exit the app. But before you go, you'll see we provided the information of the appropriate agency handling your specific request. This will help you follow up if necessary. Let's go back to the homepage to check out some more details. Now, in order to view your service request, you first have to log on or register for an account. If you have an LA DWP online account, you can use that login information. If not, you can still create your own MyLA311 account. The process is very similar to most online accounts. You can also find city facilities near your current location by selecting the "City Info" icon. You can either enter an address, or touch the funnel icon to narrow or expand your search. Simply select the areas or services you are looking for, and then touch the icons that pop up on the map. You can look up information about city services from our City Services Directory. Other options include "City Bill Pay" and even viewing city social media feeds using City Hall News. Now, if you prefer to use the service from your computer, simply go to lacity.org and click the 311 icon, and then select your choice from the menu. MyLA311, it puts the power of City Hall in your hands.
Good morning, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 15th. I'm Nury Martinez, the President of the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, present.
Bonin.
Bonin, present.
Buscaino.
Present.
Sadio.
Present.
Harris Dawson.
Councilmember Harris Dawson.
Councilmember Kerkorian.
Here.
Thank you. Lee.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Ru.
Present.
Weston.
Here.
Twelve members, Madam President, and a quorum.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of September 9th.
Mr. O'Farrell moves, and Ms. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Blumenfield moves, and Mr. Buscaino seconds, next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday, and time for the SAG salute.
Mr. Ru, will you please seat us in the pledge of allegiance, sir?
Thank you, Madam President. If everyone could rise and face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Ru. Madam Clerk, just go ahead and run through the agenda.
Madam President, would Council like all items to go forth with today?
Without objection, that will be the order, next.
Item one is an item noticed for public hearing. Items two through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 15 through 25 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objections, those items are now before us. Members, if you want to call any of these items specials, please raise your virtual hand. Mr. Buscaino?
Item 10, Madam President, that's it. Just only item 10, please.
For an amending motion or for comments?
Comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bonin?
Morning, Madam President, morning colleagues, thank you. Would like to call item number four special for comments. Would like to call item number 14 special for a technical amendment, which I can read into the record now.
Yes, go ahead.
Technical amendment would say, "I move that the matter of the Health Education Neighborhoods, Parks, Arts, and River Committee report relative to the mandatory training on diversity, equity, inclusion, and anti-bias for all members of the Los Angeles Neighborhood Councils, item number 14 on today's council agenda, CF 200990. Be amended to remove the phrase 'The Civil and Human Rights Department,' and insert, after the Civil and Human Rights Commission, the phrase and any relevant departments and commissions."
Okay, I'll second that for you. Do you have any others?
Yes, one other, Madam President. Item number 20, which I believe is noticed for a public hearing, I have submitted a substitute motion with a recommendation and conditions for the project.
Is there a second for that?
I believe Mr. Harris Dawson was going to.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Any others? Mr. Bonin?
That'll be all, thank you.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. Item number nine for comments, please.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kerkorian?
Excuse me, thank you, Madam President. On item number nine, Mr. O'Farrell and I would like to present an amending motion as well.
Can you please read that into the record?
Sure. The instructions are as follows. Instruct the Department of Aging to: A) Report immediately with its cash flow needs to continue the program for the period when FEMA reimbursement still apply. B) Report on the steps required to open a new enrollment period for seniors, as well as a new enrollment process for restaurants that wish to be added to the program. C) Extend the Meals Program through the end of October, and work with the city administrative officer to report on the cost of extending the Meals Program through the end of the calendar year. D) Report... D) Report on alternative program models for senior meals that would be more cost-efficient within a week. And four is an added recommendation. So what I just read is a replacement for recommendation number two. And then recommendation number four is added to request that the city controller take all necessary steps to assist the staff at the Department of Aging to implement an expedited payment system for participating restaurants to ensure that the program can facilitate rapid economic stimulus for struggling businesses. And that's co-presented with Mr. O'Farrell, and I understand Mr. Harris Dawson will be seconding.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson, can you confirm?
Confirming the second.
All right, Mr. Kerkorian, can you just send that over to the clerk, please?
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other items, Mr. Kerkorian?
No, I believe that's it.
Madam Clerk, what items can we vote on? Items that public comment has already been satisfied?
Thank you, Madam President. The items that Council may take up at this time are items two and three, five through eight, and eleven through thirteen.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and vote on those items. Please call the roll.
Blumenfield, aye.
Thank you. Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sidiyo.
Sidiyo, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Caretz. Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, go ahead and move on, let's move on to public comments. Can you please read out the caller information?
Thank you, Madam President. And as indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Let me repeat, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466 and press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
Mr. Kerkorian?
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize, but I erred when presenting my amending motion. I misspoke. Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. O'Farrell and I were co-presenting, and I apologize, Madam President, that you were the seconder on that, and I just misread the motion, so I apologize.
Okay, to just reflect the record that I will be seconding the amending motion.
Thank you.
On item number nine for Mr. Kerkorian, thank you. Mr. City Attorney, I understand that there will be a second hearing opportunity for item number twenty on today's agenda, so can you please explain the procedure for that item, which I would like to take up after public comment on all the agenda items today? Can you please explain the speaking rules to members of the public?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So you're correct that item number twenty will have a second public hearing opportunity. We should give the interested parties on item number twenty, the appellant and the applicant, or the appellant and applicant, five minutes each to present their case. Members of the public can speak on those, on that item, item twenty, as part of their regular public comment on all of the agenda items. So to members of the public, when it's your, when you're calling in and it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute to speak per item, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, a minute for general public comment. Please speak on the items first before providing general public comment. We'll tell you when your time is up. When you're speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not speaking on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're speaking on an agenda item, you will get one brief warning from me or the President. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic or again stray off-topic, the President will cut you off, and you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We will take forty minutes total of public comment. The items that are open for public comment are items one, nine, and fourteen through twenty-five. Finally, for people dialing in to speak, as I've said before, Zoom has reconfigured some of its settings. We used to be able to move everyone from the Zoom waiting room unmuted into the meeting all at once. Now we have to move the speakers into the meeting one at a time unmuted. So when you hear someone address you, you're in the meeting unmuted, and it's your turn to speak and tell us which items you want to speak on. Unfortunately, when you're in the waiting room, there's going to be music playing. So we understand that you're likely going to be listening to the meeting on the broadcast on Channel 35 or your computer or some other device. But please try to keep one ear on the phone so you hear when somebody's speaking to you. Please don't just listen to the broadcast, because there's a time delay between the meeting and the broadcast, and it's going to cause a lot of confusion if you're just listening to the broadcast. And then as soon as you hear someone address you, please stop listening to Channel 35 or the broadcast on your other device, and turn down the volume on the other devices, and then tell us which items you'd like to speak on, and then you can begin speaking. So thank you very much, and we'll get to item twenty later in the meeting.
Okay, can you just explain one more time what items are available for public comment? Madam Clerk, did you want to?
I can, I can repeat. The items that are available for public comment are one, nine, and fourteen to twenty-five. The clerks can correct me if that's wrong. That's right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and take the first caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0848, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 0848. Caller with the phone number ending in 0848, please state your name and what item you'd Caller with the phone number ending in 8581, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 8581, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Tony Bill on Venice Place.
What items do you want to speak on?
The Venice Place proposal.
Is that item number twenty?
You know, I believe so. It doesn't say on my schedule. Sorry.
Okay, why don't you, okay, go ahead. If you can please turn off your phone, we can hear a phone ringing in the background.
It's long gone.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, you have one minute to speak on item number twenty.
Eight years ago, this project made sense. Eight months ago, it made sense. But with COVID, everything has changed, and none of it for the better. This is a whole new deal. During the next year, thirty percent of all restaurants will go out of business permanently. Other shops and businesses will fold with them. Abbott Kinney is no exception. Twenty years ago, it was a ghost town. It can fade out much faster than it rose up. Venice Place is an oasis that will save restaurants. The restaurants will save the neighborhood, and hundreds of jobs in Abbott Kinney will maybe attract thousands of visitors of Venice again. It promises safety, cleanliness, and activity. Until then, get used to people sleeping on the sidewalks and eating on the streets. If neighbors of Abbott Kinney support it, Venice Place might, might save your neighborhood, not destroy it. Otherwise, it'll probably sink. This is your last chance to make this project your lifeboat and not your Titanic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 8958, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 8958, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, Stephanie Holmes, item number twenty.
Good morning. You have one minute to speak. Go ahead on item number twenty.
Thanks. My name is Stephanie Holmes. I live in Venice. I own a home in the Oakwood neighborhood at 643 Indiana Avenue, just a couple of blocks from the project site. And I'm a huge supporter of this project. Originally, when I, when I first heard about it, I was afraid that it was a little bit too large, you know, almost eight years ago. But the organizers of the project have reached out to the community and truly listened, and I think that's not usually the case for development in Venice. So I really appreciate the time that they've taken to speak to the community with all the meetings, and I very much support the project, and I hope it's approved today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead, next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6768.
Can you turn off your device? If you're listening, turn it down so that we can hear you.
Okay.
Please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Caller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. What item do you want to speak on?
I'd like to speak on item number twenty.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Yes, my name's Brad Miller. I'm calling with one hundred support for the Venice Place project. My home is in the Oakwood neighborhood, on the block and a half from the project. I've been here seventeen years and over twenty years in Venice. My opinion was formed over, participating in over twelve meetings over the last eight years, and I went from being on the fence, just not knowing what to think, to total support from the way they've handled their creation of this project. I think this will be great to create jobs with the local community, Venice and neighboring communities, and I think it will help greatly with the recovery from Abbott Kinney. I've seen an amazing number of small businesses shuttered and maybe closed forever on Abbott Kinney, and I think with this infusion of a project like this would really help the neighborhood. One small item about it, I think this does open up the Oakwood neighborhood to Abbott Kinney better. What has been there for decades is a long chain link.
Thank you. Thank you, your time is up. Thank you for calling. Next speaker.
Say no, grant the appeal, deny the project, or send back to APC under 245.
Caller, can you please turn off your device? We can hear the feedback.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4448, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Caller, please turn down your device. What item would you like to speak on?
Number twenty.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is Gideon Krakoff, lawyer for Unite Here Local 11 and its twenty thousand members who care about hotels following the rules in our city. A level playing field protects the members and the hospitality industry that employs them, plus they need housing. That's why Local 11 appeals today. Number twenty, does the project follow the rules? No, it's not by right. It needs three special housing incentives, and to get these housing incentives, the project needs to be predominantly residential. That's the heart of the issue. Is a project with seventy-eight hotel rooms and four apartment units predominant residential? No, Council. The housing incentives in the code explicitly reference the definition in Section 1309, which in plain English says hotels are commercial, not residential. Period, end of story, doesn't qualify for the incentives. That's why Councilman Bonin 245 the case. Say no, grant the appeal, deny the project, send back to APC under 245. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6900, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 6900.
Hello?
Hello, good morning. What item do you want to speak on?
On the Venice Place.
Okay, item number twenty. Go ahead, you have one minute.
Thank you very much. I live in the Oakwood section of Venice, and my wife and I strongly support the Venice Place. We have spoken with our neighbors, and they all support the hotel project. The hotel is within walking distance from our house and will be a great asset to Venice and for people coming to visit us and give a new place for them to stay. The area for the hotel is properly zoned for a hotel, and they have gone through all mandatory approvals from the Venice Land Use Committee, Venice Neighborhood Council, and all city approvals, with a final one a couple of months ago. During the process, the developers have listened to the neighbors' concerns and have made extensive changes to the plan to comply with the neighborhood request. As a PhD in public administration, I find that it goes against all fairness that a developer follows all the rules and Venice prevented from developing his property. Please do the right thing and allow the development of Venice Place, which will be a great asset to Venice. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Caller, please turn down your device. Caller with the phone number ending in 1006, please state your name and what item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name's Steven Vittolich, and I'd like to speak on item number twenty.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Yes, hi. I've been a resident of Venice for over four decades and a practicing professional here for over three. I live less than three blocks away from the project site, and I've been living at this location since 1990. I've ridden my bike past this site every day for over twenty years, and had always hoped that a responsible party would have the resources to help the property achieve its development potential. I was excited in 2012 when I learned of the Venice Place project. The applicant has endeavored over the past eight years to secure the entitlements for this project and has always proceeded through the process in a community-sensitive and responsible manner at every level. This opinion is supported by the West LA APC's determination to deny the appeal for the Venice Place project and approve it with conditions. This project is supported by the vast majority of the Venice residents, and when completed, will quickly become a cherished asset to the Venice community and residents, its residents and visitors. I implore the Council to not.
Thank you. Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5443, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 5443, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Ron Charbonneau. I'm supporting item number twenty. I live in Venice on Westminster Avenue, a few blocks away, and wholeheartedly support the Venice Place project. This exciting and creative multipurpose development recaptures the original spirit and bold vision of Abbott Kinney, the founder of Venice. It will provide much-needed hotel space within our community where visitors can stay and boost the local economy. The project has been approved by the city zoning administrator and the West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission. Over the past eight years, many public meetings were held, and significant modifications have already been made as a result. The project conforms with all city code requirements for height limits, sidewalk access, parking and traffic flow, and has overwhelming local support. Please embrace the positive, beautiful vision for the future embodied by the Venice Place project and approve it without further delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Caller with the phone, caller with the phone number ending in 1146, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 1146, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, I'm speaking on item number 20.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Dimster, and I'm a resident of Venice in the Oakwood track. I fully support the Venice Place Project and have followed the evolution, attended numerous meetings, and written letters of support over the past eight years. I've been really impressed with the level of community engagement that this group has made. The project's not asking for any exceptions. They've really listened to the neighbors and have gone above and beyond what anyone should be expected to do in terms of time and energy to build a project that's within all code requirements. I urge you to approve the project, which will bring jobs to Venice and visitor dollars to our local businesses that need it so badly. This is the kind of responsible development our community needs. Thank you.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 9762, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 9762, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name's Billy Lehman-Goodier, and I want to speak on item 20.
Okay, good morning. You have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm very supportive of this project. I want to echo everything I've heard from the other supporters. And I want to add one other thought, which is that the character of Venice has been deeply impacted by the scourge of short-term rentals over the last few years. They bring trash, disrespect, and most importantly, the replacement of neighbors with strangers. And that has really changed the character of our closely knit communities. The only answer to illegitimate hotel lodging is thoughtfully planned and regulated legitimate hotel lodging. If we say no to Airbnb and we say no to a great hotel, we are in effect saying yes to Airbnb. The demand will create the supply, and the economics will continue to drive the black market result that we are all living with. And I want to point out one other thing, which is that this is a project designed.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0806, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 0806, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
My name is Ally Mills Bean. I don't know, am I on right now?
Yes, you are. What item do you want to speak on?
My name is Ally Mills Bean, and I'd like to speak on item 20. I just have to note for the record that I'm kind of amazed that all of these pro hotel speakers have been allowed to speak first, but I don't know how that worked because I've been on since 8:15. Anyway, good morning, councilmembers. My name is Ally Bean. I'm a 30-year resident of Venice. I feel that the heart of this issue, I've been listening to the other speakers, is Councilman Bonin called this 245 motion because he recognized that after eight years of outreach, and I know the applicant perhaps was not intentional in doing so, totally failed to include the members of the historic Oakwood community in his outreach. He spoke with one of the leaders of that community yesterday for the very first time. The community that he chose his hotel in is the Oakwood community. And that leader of the community, and I quote, said, "The voices of their historic community, Black, Brown, and Indigenous," in case she doesn't get to get on to speak, because I don't think she will, "They feel that their voices have been completely unheard. They have felt voiceless, insignificant, and ignored." After being privy to.
Next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 4427, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 4427, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 4427, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Speaker, are you there?
Caller with the phone number ending in 6656, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 6656, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, this is Dan Abrams. I am the applicant for item number 20. It's my understanding that I'll be heard after general public comment, when our item is heard.
So that's correct. You'll get a separate opportunity later in this meeting. So we'll reopen the phone lines and have you call in again.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 0861. Caller with the phone number ending in 2343, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Robin Rudisil, item 20.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
One of the most important things for you to remember here with the Venice Abbot Kinney Hotel Project is that Venice is in the coastal zone, and what might be lawful elsewhere in the city in terms of sheer size and scale is not legal here. The coastal plan, the coastal act, the certified land use plan, all protect the Venice coastal zone above and beyond the LAMC Pacific Plan, Community Plan, and General Plan. On top of that, Venice is a special coastal community as defined under the law and which requires even more protection. In fact, Venice is one of the most protected communities in the state, if not the nation. Coastal Act requires that Venice's character and scale be protected, and City Planning CDP does not even address that, presumably due to huge pressure to approve this project. City Council, don't be a part of these errors and severe abuse of discretion. You represent the people, not the developers, and you must not be above the law. Thank you, Councilman Bonin, for your support. Thank you, City Council.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7551, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 7551, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hello?
Hello, what item do you want to speak on?
Line item 20, please.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute.
Hello, good morning, council attendees. My name is Alan Prism Tabor. I am a four-generation Oakwood resident. I own a home as well as income property. Look, I testify in support of the Venice Place Project. It brings new revenue and employment to the immediate area. I think it's key for Abbot Kinney's growth, especially in these trying times. I think it would benefit commercial as far as, as well as residential sectors. So I believe Dan Abrams has been just about as persistent and transparent as one could ask. As far as oppositions, I would consider the source. Obviously, no racial or income shouldn't factor into the development of this project. I hope to see this project through, and I wish Dan Abrams and the Venice Place Project much on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 5576, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 5576, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Mike Schibell, and the item is number 20, the Venice Place Project.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you very much. My name is Mike Schibell. I appreciate the opportunity. I live on Sunset Avenue in the Venice Oakwood section of Venice. I've been a Venice resident for almost a decade and native Angeleno, who grew up in the area and have really been working and playing in the area for over three decades. I've watched, listened, and learned of the Venice Place Project for several years. I've discussed this project with my neighbors in Oakwood community. This is the most diverse part of Venice, low-income families, people of color. And all of my neighbors and I have spoken with, we all want this project to happen, to bring jobs and to bring positive change and pride to Venice. Now, there have been many nonprofits in the area, including St. Joseph's Center or SPY, that would benefit from the local job being provided, that this group has stated, to help the locals. Now, in a time where our neighborhood and really our community could use all the support for the good, we support this project, myself, my neighbors. This is an opportunity to shape the future of this community and positivity. So I'll be helping myself and our neighbors.
Thank you for calling. Your time is up.
Please help build the better tomorrow.
Thank you. Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 2616, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending, please turn down your device. Caller with the phone number ending in 2616, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, it's Eric Previn, and I'd like to speak on all of the items and a general public comment.
Okay, Mr. Previn, you've got three minutes for your items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, well, first of all, I just want to thank Dana Sales of 360. Now, 360 is a lobbying firm that cozied up with Englander Kenobi and Allen. This is item 20. And kudos on pushing through in a neighborhood, the onsite consumption of alcohol and a full line of alcoholic beverages. Essentially, what's going on is a hotel. The lovely little hotel is popping up in their neighborhood. And they fought hard to block it, but now it's obviously moving forward. And I just want to congratulate the folks who, the uncle of Mitchell Englander, the FBI indictee, for shoving this one right down the throat. Item number 21 is the city administrative officers trying to find at Mr. Harris Dawson's urging a couple hundred thousand dollars in a very empty cabinet of additional funds in order to get some trained workers at the parks in his district. One idea for $220,000 is to simply pluck off someone like Andrew Westall, who makes about $220, or Curtis Ernest, or these guys who were taking significant raises, like Carol Deroce, during a period when the city is not just compressing and about to compress, but if you listen to Krikorian yesterday, you know, there's like already $97 million in the hole, and we haven't even started yet. There's no revenue. So we're in very, very bad shape financially. But I do support what he's doing, and I ask the.
Mr. Previn, you need to get back on the items on today's agenda, sir, or I'm going to move you on to general public comment. Get back on topic.
No, I'm talking about Council District 8 Parks, the item number 21. Anyway, don't take my time, please. That would be inappropriate. Let me finish. Where am I in the timing? I mean, you just interrupted me apropos of nothing. I don't know why you did that. But anyway, there's a lot of stuff on this agenda that's inside the middle where we're not allowed to talk, so I'll, as a courtesy, avoid that. I would like to know if the pilot program for CD1 that Mr. Sadio is talking about to get social distancing is going to be a pilot program where they go around ticketing people in the parks, because that certainly is not something that anybody favors or wants. We want to be safe, but we don't want to be harassed by Paul Coretts, who's, you know, busy scolding people for idling their vehicles in 110-degree temperatures. And, you know, pretty soon I will agree to go to my general public comment, but I don't have a sense of where I am in the timing because of the rude interruption. I will say that I'm delighted to see that Buscaino and O'Farrell are cognizant of the fact that it's important to keep breweries open at all costs. This, of course, is one of the things that got us in trouble when the pandemic surged. But now they're ready to, you know, once again, let's get some help to this group and also to the.
Mr. Previn, move on to your general public comment now.
My general public comment? Yeah. Okay, my general public comment today is about the office that you all aspire to hold, which is a county board of supervisors seat. I know that Councilmember Martinez is, you know, ruminating about that. Certainly, Coretts, once he falls on his face at the Galprin job, will be looking closely. And certainly Herb Weston is trying desperately now to get in there while taking money from Axon, the teaser company, which is just disgusting. Again, tag Englander, outright fraud, editorial in the LA Times, and yet here we all are clustering around. And I would ask Doc Melly, you know, the Melinda Abdullah, just to really think long and hard before she comes boldly out for Holly Mitchell, because I got to tell you, Herb Weston has really not done a good job. He's the one, Councilmember Martinez, who handed you the, "Let's reduce the public by a huge percentage in the telecast." And now, he probably came up with the great idea to roll back all the public meetings so we don't even have to discuss with the public the things that are on the agenda. Because we're done. We already heard from them in the committees that we didn't like, for example.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 7670, please state your name and the item we'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 7670, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is Robert Huff, and I'm an African-American homeowner who's part of the Tabor family and has occupied Venice since its inception. Places for visitation to Venice are limited and very hard to get. I'm in favor of this Venice Place Project because it's a chance for a new beginning, to ignite an economic prosperous spark to this community. I think it offers inclusion to the local residents as well as foreign visitors. This project will not only help the local surrounding area, but it offers a new chance to offer a space where people from here and far can come together. That's my time.
Next caller.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1573, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 1573, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
That's my time.
Caller with the phone number ending in 1573, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, I'm Debra Samuels, and I'd like to talk about item 20.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
I've lived in the Oakwood neighborhood for 34 years and speak for the over 700 Oakwood residents and Westminster School families who've signed a petition opposing the project. We request the council reject this project. In our country today, where inequality, both economic and racial, is in the spotlight, it's imperative that the city council take the time necessary to understand the consequences of this project, which will have exasperating, which will exacerbate the imbalance. The project is a luxury boutique hotel in a low-income neighborhood that is rapidly losing its diversity and affordability to gentrification. The project is the largest non-residential project west of Lincoln Boulevard and will set a precedent for all future development in Venice. Many people in the Oakwood neighborhood are just hearing about the hotel. There's not been sufficient outreach by the applicant to those people who will be directly impacted by. who will be directly impacted by the project. If the city decides to approve this project, the question shifts to who will bear the greatest burden for the benefits. The developers and their supporters claim this project will bring to Venice, at least with respect to noise pollution and parking, the answer is...
Next caller?
Caller with the phone number... Please turn down your device. Caller, please turn down your device.
Hello?
Caller with the phone number ending in 8485, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, my name is John Given. I actually represent one of the appellants, Keep Neighborhoods First, and so I would prefer to hold my time until the item's called.
Okay, we're gonna, as soon as we end general, I mean, public comment for the rest of the items, we're gonna take item number 12 individually, so just call back, okay?
Uh, I'm, I'm speaking on item 20, this is the Venice Place Project.
Oh, I thought you were one of the appellants.
Representing one of the appellants.
So, Speaker, are you just a regular member of the public? Or are you, as I think, a representative of the appellant or the applicant?
Yes, that's right, I'm, I'm a representative of the appellant, Keep Neighborhoods First.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, we're not gonna take you now. You will get a separate, longer period of time to speak when we reopen public comment just for the applicants and the appellants later in this meeting. Is that all right?
Thank you so much for the clarification.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and take the next speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in 9195, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 9195, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 9195, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 3766, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 3766, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Yes, my name is Paul Brico, and I'd like to speak about item 20.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm a 30-year resident of Venice. Um, I currently live in the Oakwood neighborhood on Brooks Avenue, a little less than two blocks away from the project, where I've currently resided for a little over 20 years. I also operate my business in Venice over on Winward Circle, and I've been a huge supporter of the project for the past eight years. And I would note that a lot of the opposition doesn't live in our neighborhood, doesn't live in Oakwood. Um, a lot of the people that have commented on, on the, uh, via the, on the opposing, opposing side. The applicant has jumped through multiple hoops over the last eight years and has, contrary to some of the comments on this call, engaged in constant community outreach. I've been invited to multiple meetings. She's been approved by the Venice Neighborhood Council, the Venice Chamber of Commerce, LA Business Council, um, and conforms to code. And, uh, I would agree with one of the other callers that this is a needed, particularly post-pandemic injection of capital into the economy, and we need the jobs that he is going to provide vis-à-vis the hotel. Um, and it will diminish a lot of the sort of...
Thank you, caller.
...black market housing that is rife in our neighborhood vis-à-vis Airbnb.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending in 6963, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Caller, are you there?
Hello?
Hello, what item do you want to speak on?
Um, general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
Okay, I'm here to speak on the homeless crisis, my name is Tyler Lindberg. To me, I think it's clear that the only way to ensure that every homeless person currently on the streets receives a modicum of services while also being able to meet the requirements of the Boise settlement and being able to clean up the streets on any sort of reasonable timeline is by instituting sanctioned service encampments on vacant lots. I'm all in support of, uh, supportive housing, but it's taking too long. The situation on the streets right now is untenable. People just aren't getting the help that they need while they wait for these units. And while we wait, the city is not keeping up its duty to maintain clean and safe streets. I spend most of my time downtown, Westlake, K-Town, Hollywood, and I try to live the walkable, transit-oriented lifestyle that I prefer and that the city has been pushing. But it's really difficult when you can't go a block without encountering a machete-wielding person on drugs or tripping over a pile of garbage. And all someone has to do is take a video camera and Fox News has all the fodder they need to fuel Trump's anti-California shtick. And I know there's a budget crisis, but it's been since way before the pandemic, and I just think that it makes the need for sanctioned encampments all the more apparent...
Thank you very much, caller.
...to deliver the FEMA-like response. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Caller with the phone number ending in 6068, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on. Caller with the phone number ending in 6068, please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on.
Hi, yeah, is this for me?
Yes, what items do you want to speak on?
Hi, yeah, uh, item 20 and general public comment, please.
Okay, you have one minute for each, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's funny that, uh, all of these supporters of item 20 got to call in first and, uh, you know, somehow got special privileges. I've never quite seen anything like that before, uh, with the calling in, so. Um, but yeah, item 20, uh, I think it's significant that, you know, like here, the, the union was against, uh, item 20. I'm calling, uh, in opposition to item 20. It's funny, um, I know there's a lot of funny things, but it's funny that, um, uh, most of the people in support said that they were, uh, homeowners or business owners, uh, which is great for you, Nury, and, uh, and a few of the people on City Council who are also, um, homeowners or landlords. Um, you are just standing in solidarity with, uh, your class members. Um, so obviously, this is something that, uh, you would be in support of. But, uh, for a lot of people in LA who are not, uh, homeowners or landlords, um, you know, they would be against, uh, the Venice Palace Place Project. Um, this is a textbook example of the kind of development that exhibits no regard for the community. Um, they're masquerading as a residential project while not offering any of the community benefits a residential project would include, like, affordable, uh, housing. Um, you should recite, uh, reject this project. Um, you know, it's 78 hotel rooms in four apartments, um, under code 1309. Hotels are, are commercial. So how do, how do these 78 hotel rooms, um, you know, go, go, make sense as a residential project? They don't make sense at all. Um, why not, callers are talking about, there's not many short-term, uh, locations in Venice, and they're being beat. Um, and then for my general public comment, um, I would like to note that, you know, uh, yesterday's Budget and Finance Committee meeting, um, you're talking about how there's hundreds of millions of, uh, 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 windfall in the, in the budget. Why not start with the largest budget item, LAPD, uh, contracts? Open those contracts up, don't be afraid of the LAPPL. Say Daniel Hernandez's name, Daniel Hernandez, shot and killed by Tony McBride. Her father, Jamie McBride, head of the LAPPL. That's how you, that's who you discuss the LAPD contracts with. So it's like, do you really stand with the people if you are negotiating with the father of a murderer, of, of one of your constituents? I don't get how that happens. Um, defund the police, cancel rent, project, uh, project room key. Uh, there's still, you know, thousands of rooms that haven't been filled. Um, just, you know, wondering if any of you even give a shit. We're all wondering that.
Thank you. Okay, members, that concludes public comment, um... Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on the following items. Let's vote on item number one, item 15 through 20, and items 21 through 25. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me repeat that one more time. It's item number one, items number 15 through 19, and items 21 through 25.
Thank you, Madam President.
Please call the roll.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Coretts. Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez. Councilmember Rodriguez. Rue.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
12 ayes, these items are adopted.
Okay, members, we're gonna go move on to item number four. This was called special by Mr. Bonin. For callers who are waiting for item number 20, we are gonna come back to that item. I just have to make sure these items are dealt with. So why don't we go ahead and take item number four, it was called special by Mr. Bonin.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, colleagues, I will be brief on this one. Uh, this is one of, uh, two planning-related items in Venice today. I actually anticipated we would have heard as much about this one as we do the other. Uh, this is a permanent supportive housing project in Venice on Lincoln Boulevard. Uh, 40 units, uh, being, uh, done sort of jointly by Venice Community Housing and SPY, which is a safe place for youth. Uh, to build a permanent supportive housing or homeless housing on, on the west side where land is, is incredibly expensive, only two strategies have been, been, been really successful. One is using government land, and the other is for nonprofits, 501(c)(3)'s, to be using the land that they own. And so earlier this year, the, the city approved on Rose Avenue in Venice the use of the Venice Community Housing headquarters for building of, of permanent supportive housing. And this is, um, a similar action where SPY is using their headquarters, uh, which is a, currently a drop-in center several days a week for unhoused young people under the age of 24, and is working with Venice Community Housing and is converting it into, uh, 40 units of 100% affordable PSH housing. Uh, it has been a bit of a, uh, a contentious issue getting to this point. Uh, at one point, there were two appeals. Uh, one that was notable, it got some attention, was by the Archdiocese of Los Angeles concerned, uh, its local parish was concerned about the proximity of a school nearby. I'm happy to report that last week before the Plum Meeting, the, uh, the Archdiocese and the local church struck an agreement with some conditions with Venice Community Housing on operations and is now in support of the project. Uh, just last week, as a matter of fact, we actually approved funding for additional permanent supportive housing for veterans at the VA in, in Brentwood. Uh, and we've got a couple of projects in the works in CD11 for, uh, PSH housing in Westchester and in Mar Vista. Uh, many people will say, uh, correctly, that this is but a drop in the bucket for the, the crisis we are facing on our streets, and that permanent supportive housing is too expensive and is not fast enough. It is expensive, and it is not fast enough. But it is the appropriate intervention for some people who are unhoused. And, uh, it has to be one of multiple strategies. And this council has been working on, and, and last week voted, uh, at least for some of the funding we need for a number of those other strategies. Rapid rehousing, shared housing, other ways to get people off the streets immediately who don't need permanent supportive housing. So, uh, I'm glad to see that at least one of the appeals for this project was withdrawn. Uh, I'm glad to see it being one of many different PSH projects in the city and look forward to it being part of a number of different strategies we use to, to get people off the streets. So I'd ask for, uh, our approval today, uh, of the, uh, the Plum Committee recommendation, which has the, uh, attached, uh, additional conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin, go ahead. Uh, Madam Clerk, let's call the roll on item number four.
Blumenfield.
Blumenfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio. Councilmember Sadio.
Sadio, aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Coretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell. Councilmember O'Farrell.
Aye, sorry about that, aye.
Thank you. Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez. Rue.
Aye.
Weston.
Aye.
13 ayes, this matter is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number nine. This was called special by Mr. O'Farrell and Mr. Krikorian. So, Mr. Krikorian, you have your, your amending motion that's been circulated, um, and Mr. O'Farrell also called it special. Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Krikorian?
Uh, no, thank you, Madam President, with the amending motion, um, I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Madam President, thank you for scheduling this item today. Uh, colleagues, I, I want to underscore the absolute importance and necessity of meal programs like this for our seniors, uh, in Los Angeles. According to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, people 65 and over make up 80% of the COVID-19-related deaths across the country. Uh, to protect vulnerable seniors, our city, led by Mr. Krikorian, met the moment and implemented the Great Plates Delivery Program as a senior meal emergency response to bring, and also along the way, bringing LA restaurants, hospitality businesses, and franchise taxi companies, uh, together for a joint effort, uh, to help with the economy and feed the most vulnerable among us. Although the program successfully serves meals to about 20,000 seniors currently and provides an economic lifeline to our local businesses suffering from the COVID-19 economy, the program remains means-tested, and that's, that's where the issue is, and where we're exploring improving upon that. And should, uh, the department, uh, eliminate the program, looking for ways that the city can continue it for a little while longer. As a result of that means test, seniors making more than $24,981 annually are excluded from the program, leaving thousands of seniors unable to participate and forced to risk their health by leaving their homes to get food that would otherwise be brought to them. The truth is, we don't know when we'll have a vaccine or effective treatments, for how long any of us will have to adhere to the stay-at-home orders. While it's good news that FEMA has extended funding for this program until October 9th, and it was supposed to run out at the beginning of September, hopefully FEMA will extend to the end of December, but there is no guarantee. The reason Mr. Krikorian and I brought forward the original motion is that if FEMA decides not to extend the funding for this program, and the city, for any reason, has to pay to continue this essential service, we have the opportunity to make the program better suited to our seniors and local businesses. By creating a new city-led approach and senior meal program, we can continue to, to serve the elderly, our parents, and our grandparents, whose health may very well depend on this specific type of food delivery. We can even expand the program to serve seniors excluded due to the federal requirements and provide meals to those thousands of seniors wanting to participate but can't. And in the process, expand some desperately needed economic stimulus for local neighborhood LA restaurants. Uh, I'd like to thank the Department of Aging, led by Alora Trejo, uh, for their findings, their support, and their great work on this issue. I, and colleagues, uh, ask for your aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Buscaino? Mr. Buscaino, do you wish to speak on this item?
If I may, thank you, Madam President. Um, just want to support this motion to extend the senior meal program. In CD15, we're really proud to be one of the first to launch, uh, along with Marquise Harris Dawson, uh, in CD8. We had, uh, seen the impacts of, we foresaw the impacts of COVID-19, um, back in, in late March, uh, going into April, so we felt that it was important for us to stimulate the economy by supporting our local businesses. So we felt that it was important for us to stimulate the economy by supporting our local businesses to serve the seniors in CD-15. I just want to share with you the impacts by reading a letter from Christine and Rich. They are San Pedro residents. They wrote, "Because both my husband and I are both at risk of coronavirus, not only due to our age but also to chronic health issues, we really appreciate having to be concerned with grocery shopping and meal preparation for four days each week. We're most grateful to you and your office, as well as the restaurants who participated in this program. It was great comfort to us during this very challenging time." I'm sure Christine and Rich also, they represent the majority of the seniors throughout the city of Los Angeles and all corners of our city, who appreciate this meal delivery program. But at the same time, I also know that our restaurants also appreciate the fact that we're helping them during these challenging times. So appreciate this motion and the extension of the senior meal program.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this item as amended. Please call the roll.
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadio. Councilmember Sadio. Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Caretz.
Yes.
Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
Oferl.
Aye.
Sadio, aye.
Thank you.
Price, price, aye too.
Thank you. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, this matter is adopted as amended.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item number ten. This was called special by Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Madam President, members. The item before you is in support of bringing back our breweries throughout the city and region and county, I should say. The city is home to nearly thirty breweries. They are a vital part of our local economy. And despite being allowed to open under the state's health order, the county continues to force breweries to stay closed. Many breweries have open air inland, as in one in my district at Crafted, at Brewery West, much more so than most restaurants, and customers would be able to spread out safely. Why is it that I ask myself? Why is it that you can get bottomless mimosas at brunch, but you can't grab a beer and tacos at a local brewery? There's no logic here, and many businesses are suffering because of it. We do know across the street, the Board of Supervisors is voting on an item today that would allocate $10 million to businesses like breweries that have been forced to stay closed per the county order. But that money should be used for something else. Simply allowing, allow breweries to safely reopen, which is what they really want and need right now, not a small buy at a pool of grant dollars. So with that, I ask for your aye vote in support of this motion.
Mr. Oferl?
Thank you, Madam President. And Mr. Buscaino, thank you for your leadership in this very important and easily overlooked. It's worth noting that LA County Brewers Guild, according to them, LA County creates over $13 million in annual state and local tax revenue. And as you mentioned, you mentioned the number of breweries in the city. And it's an important component to just restaurants and that are, you know, have partially reopened with outdoor seating, et cetera. So these are exactly the types of accessory components to running a restaurant operation that are really critical to another, I think, overlooked sector of our local economy. So I think this is really important, really great. And you know what? After COVID and stay-at-home, it feels really good to be in the open air, safely distanced from someone else and having a nice cold beer. So I wholly, wholeheartedly support this, and I hope that the county follows through with their action led by Supervisor Han. Thanks again, Mr. Buscaino, and I also ask for an aye vote.
Members, hold on for just a second. We just hold, heard a loud explosion outside. We're trying to figure out what that noise was. Hold on for just a second. We need to go into a five-minute recess.
...
to help this, these micro businesses and breweries to help stay afloat. That is, she's getting the call to the Brewery Association, I believe that Mr. O'Farrell alluded to earlier. And she did express a concern with large gatherings. But the argument is that you have, breweries have open air locations that they can practice social distancing. Again, just based on what I've seen here, what I observed in my district with Brewery West, huge open space, they are allowed to open. And again, if we can do the same for restaurants, why not breweries?
So this is only intended to be the exact same outdoor format that we're using for...
Correct. Yes, sir. Correct. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts, if it makes you feel comfortable, this is a report back if you want your questions answered in the report back. Yep. Okay. Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell?
I was just going to add before Mr. Buscaino weighed in, this is a companion piece to what the county's doing. And those same concerns are already being asked by Supervisor Han. So I'm confident that this will be done safely and deliberatively. And it's worth noting that we are entering month seven of the pandemic in shutdown. So by definition, we are going very slow with this. And so your comments and concerns are very on point and well received. But I'm confident that those concerns are going to be addressed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. So go ahead and prepare to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadiel.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes. This matter is adopted.
Okay, let's move on to item number fourteen. This item was amended by Mr. Bonin. Mr. Bonin, do you want to speak on this item or can we vote on it as amended?
We can vote on it as amended, thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on item number fourteen as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscaino.
Aye.
Sadiel.
Aye.
Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Corretts.
Aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes. This matter is adopted as amended.
Okay, members, we're going to take a ten-minute recess. We need to open up our phone lines to be able to take up item number twenty. We also need to allow staff to come into our meeting so they can answer any questions. So we're going to go ahead and take a ten-minute recess, and we'll be back to take up item number twenty.
Okay, members, we're back in session. We're going to go ahead and take up item number 20, which was called "Special" by Mr. Bonin. Mr. Bonin, do you wish to speak on this item?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Let me give a bit of context before we go to the public hearing and give some sense of direction. Colleagues, you heard lots of testimony about this during general public comment. This is a proposed project on Abbott Kenny Boulevard in Venice that includes a, basically taking a block in Venice and including a new hotel, a few, four residential units, and neighborhood-serving restaurants and retail. This project has had a long history. I first heard of this project when I was working for my predecessor, Bill Rosendahl. It's been about eight years getting to this point. And as is the case with many development projects and many projects in Venice, it is one with a fair amount of controversy. I will say, you know, most any project that comes through the planning process in Venice has a level of controversy and has a strong pocket of opposition. This one is unusual in that it also has a very strong, well-organized pocket of support. This project has significant community support and has done a lot of outreach in a lot of Venice. On the other hand, as you heard, there are some segments of the community which feel like they have not been engaged and want more engagement. It is very rare for me to do a 245. I think in seven years, this is only the second one I have done, if I'm not mistaken. But this one had a number of special circumstances. In Venice, not only do you have the project itself, but you also have the Venice-specific plan, you also have the fact that we are in the coastal zone, which has an entirely different set of criteria by which projects must be evaluated. And you're also, as part of the being in the coastal zone, there's also an obligation to be providing visitor-serving land uses as well. And in our specific plan, having a hotel was actually indicated for this area. We 245'd it in order to give an extra level of scrutiny for this. Some of the project supporters were upset that there was a 245, but it was a big enough project in Venice that it did that. So I have actually read every single appeal in great detail, listened to all of the hearings on tape, read the letter of determination, and talked to a number of people, and I've concluded a couple of different things. One, our zoning code is an absolute disgraceful nightmare. And never is it more apparent than in this case, where in order to determine what applies, you are constantly linked to another set, another section of the municipal code, from 1309 to 12.22 and 12.24. It's an absolute nightmare. And this issue here came down to a couple of different questions of how the zoning code is read. One, there was a fight, and some of the appellants alleged that this project should not qualify as mixed use and be avail itself of the benefits of being a mixed-use project. And a lot of it comes down to the very weird way that our zoning code defines a hotel. In some ways, the zoning code in some circumstances defines hotels as commercial. In most ways, though, hotels are defined as residential. Our zoning code by, in the term for residential, it includes hotels and hostels and actual dwelling units. But it is described in most places as residential and therefore for qualified as residential here. There are also significant concerns about, not the Abbott Kenny side, but the Electric Avenue side facing the historic Oakwood neighborhood and what the impacts of parking and traffic would be. Having considered all of that, I was prepared today to recommend approval of the project with a bunch of conditions that had been imposed by APC and some additional conditions as well. While the project, because it is a hotel, is not subject to the linkage fee, the applicant was willing to pay the amount that would be accrued for a linkage fee, had it applied, times two, and was also willing to do a number of other different things. We have been informed, however, by the city attorney's office that the number and the extent of the conditions proposed to make this project work for Venice is too lengthy and extensive for us to consider today without there being significantly more public notice in advance of that, so that both the applicant and particularly the appellants can read and digest those conditions. So at city attorney's suggestion, and Streff can augment this if he needs to, city attorney's suggestion, I will withdraw the motion today, which would approve with conditions, and instead, in order to get the project approved with the conditions the proper way, remand it back, I recommend we vote to remand it back to the area planning condition where these conditions can then be attached. I trust APC will do that quickly and in an expeditious manner, so this issue can get to an ultimate resolution. So that would be my motion. Mr. City Attorney, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, I think that you're correct, that the number of conditions are extensive and somewhat complicated, and I very much appreciate and understand that we've had the appellants and the public on the phone for a long time. But I really do think as a matter of, both under the Brown Act and fairness, this needs to be out in the public longer for them to be able to read it and digest it before we act on this. So I do think you're right, and given the fact that we're at the deadline, vetoing and remanding back to the APC is the appropriate course.
So that's obviously going to be welcome to some people, it's going to be incredibly frustrating to others. As I said, this project has been in the queue for working through the community process for a very long time, and I think it is important that we get to resolution quickly. Your guidance was that any approval today with the conditions probably would not have withstood legal scrutiny, so to get the project done right, the appropriate way is to go back to APC. In the interest, though, of getting to a final decision, I'm wondering if planning can give any indication of how quickly this can get back to APC?
I don't think we have the planning staff here, or do, maybe we do. Are they online?
Yes, the planning staff is available for questions. I believe they've already entered our meeting, so, Mr. Bonin, do you have questions of them?
Yes, just wanted planning to indicate how quickly this can get back to the Area Planning Commission.
So, planning staff on our meeting?
This is Giulietto with City Planning. We would have to check our advanced calendars, we're doing that right now, but we would also have to consider the noticing required for the new hearing, so if we could just hold for just one second.
Sure, I mean, we want to put it on the first available opportunity. You can give us that later, if you want to go to the hearing if you want, I'm fine with that, Madam Chair, Madam President.
Well, since we're, well, first off, we have a motion to veto and then remand to the APC, we'll need a second on that.
Second?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coretts. So, given what we're doing is basically ending the process and in a way restarting, we don't need to continue the hearing, listening to the appellant or the applicants or the public further. So hopefully, we'll get an answer on the timing from planning fairly soon, and then we can simply vote on the veto and remand. And again, our appreciation to the public and to the appellants, we understand you've been on the phone a long time, but I agree with Mr. Bonin, this is sort of the necessary course at this point.
I would note, while we're waiting for that, it's, there were, while most of the conditions that were before us today were ones that were imposed by APC, there were additional conditions which were, well, part of the council action, ones that the applicant, Mr. Abrams, had agreed to readily and enthusiastically, which was money for affordable housing in Venice, which was a local hire program for jobs created by the hotel, and which was safeguards put in place to protect the community from any traffic impacts if the automated parking system that the facility would be using failed. And I really appreciate the extent to which he was willing to engage and try to make a project better for the community.
This is Giulietto with City Planning. The next available hearing date for the West LA APC would be October 21st.
Is that the next APC meeting?
Yes, that will, it's the next available and where we could, where we can accommodate the 24-day noticing.
And even though it's been to APC before, it still needs 24 days?
Well, I think, I would seek the advice of the city attorney on this matter if we do need a new public hearing.
We should, we should re-notice it, just like we would normally do, so yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
So, we've got a motion, and we had a second from Mr. Coretts, so we can vote on this item.
Can we just go ahead and vote on this item? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield.
Bloomingfield, aye.
Bonin.
Bonin, aye.
Buscagno.
Aye.
Sidiel.
Aye.
Harris-Darson.
Yes.
Coretts.
Aye.
Kerkorian. Councilmember Kerkorian.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Martinez.
Aye.
O'Farrell.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Aye.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Rodriguez.
Aye.
Rue.
Aye.
Wesson.
Wesson, aye.
Fourteen ayes, this motion is adopted.
Okay, Madam Clerk, what's before us now?
Madam President, the clerk has three verbal motions to read into the record.
Okay, why don't you start with the first one?
First is a motion introduced by Councilmember Bonin, referred to the Public Safety Committee relative to the Emergency Management Department, Chief Legislative Analyst, City Administrative Officer, Department of Recreation and Parks, Department of General Services, Library Department, Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, to develop a plan for a significant increase, at least one per community plan, in the number of emergency relief and refugee centers. Is there a second to this public safety motion?
Second.
Second. Okay, second by Mr. Coretts. Next one?
Second is a motion introduced by Councilmember Bonin, referred to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee relative to the initiation of consideration of the First Baptist Church located at 671-685 and 686-688, East Westminster Avenue, Venice, California, as a city historical-cultural monument, and to request to prepare a historical-cultural monument application for review and consideration by the Cultural Heritage Commission. Is there a second to this motion?
I believe Mr. Harris-Dawson wanted to be a co-presenter on that motion.
Mr. Harris-Dawson, can you confirm that?
I'm confirming that.
Thank you. Next.
Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you. The last verbal motion is a motion introduced by Councilmember Rodriguez, referred to council relative to funding for services in connection with the illumination of City Hall to commemorate the city's celebration of El Grito de Dolores on September 15 through September 16, 2020. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Madam President.
Do you have any others?
No, that is all.
Mr. Sadio, for verbal motions.
Thank you. Had problems with this button today. Yesterday, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, in their infinite wisdom, affirmed the discretion of the Trump administration in terminating a program called TPS, Temporary Protective Services. It's a program that has been existent for decades. It's a program that this country should be proud of and creating safe haven for countries that have suffered tumult or disasters, civil wars, hurricanes, earthquakes, et cetera, that forces people to flee their homeland. Los Angeles is home of the largest Salvadoran population outside of San Salvador, most likely the largest home of Nicaravenses outside of Manawa. It is a place where this change will have tremendous impact. It will divide families. These are families who have been here for over two decades and who now have to make decisions of whether they return to their country with their American children, or if they return without their American children, or if they don't return at all and take on the new status of being undocumented. These are people who have followed the rules, played by the rules, and there is no reason for us to do so other than another example of the ongoing draconian practices and policies of the Trump administration as he tries to politicize almost every vulnerable community that exists in our country. So with that, we are working with SALF and Plinca Osvaldo Romero as well. Let me read the following. Therefore, be it resolved with the concurrence of the mayor that by the adoption of this resolution, the City of Los Angeles hereby includes in its 2019-2020 federal legislative program support for any legislation and administrative action which will overturn or otherwise nullify the decision of the Ninth U.S. Circuit Court of Appeals, which approved the president's plan to end TPS for four countries and has effectively green-lighted the administration's plan to expel more than 300,000 undocumented immigrants from El Salvador, Nicaragua, Sudan, from the U.S. by ending the TPS program, which they have enjoyed for as long as two decades. And we resolve to support the Dream and Promise Act to grant TPS status holders a permanent residency before another wave of family separations occurs.
Second.
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 And as someone who worked on that legislation 20 years ago with Congressman Berman, I feel strongly about this and want to definitely be part of seconding it, even if I'm joined by multiple other folks.
Okay, that was seconded by Ms. Rodriguez. Any others, Mr. Sadio?
That's it for now. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to introduce, and I'm going to read, I therefore move that the council instruct the Department of City Planning in consultation with the Department of Building and Safety and City Attorney to prepare an interim control ordinance to suspend all ongoing construction, which is not necessary for provision of utilities or water supply, and prohibit the issuance of demolition, building, grading, hauling, and any other applicable permits for properties located inclusively within both the Hillside and Very High Fire Hazard Severity Zones until November 30, 2020, where the properties are located on streets with a single point of ingress and egress, streets serving as collector streets for multiple streets with single point of ingress and egress, substandard streets, and any property inside the Hillside and Very High Fire Severity Zones with an average LAFD emergency response time of seven minutes or more.
Second.
Second by Mr. Coretts. Any others, Mr. Rue?
No, that's it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Buscayino. Mr. Buscayino, you have any verbal motions to introduce?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, the Department of Building Safety and City Attorney, I feel, has to enforce the city's nuisance abatement and property, problem property ordinance and mandate compliance from property owners who neglect their properties and enforce compliance using all available civil penalties, including A citations, and initiate nuisance abatement administrative proceedings to achieve compliance. So therefore, I move that the city attorney, with the assistance of the Department of Building and Safety, be requested to notify property owners and financial institutions that carry a mortgage on the property via written correspondence when LADBS issues an order to abate vacant structure for violations of LAMC 91.8904, and warn they could be subject to fines, criminal prosecution, and recovery of city abatements caused through the lien against the property if corrective action is not taken prior to the compliance date on an LADBS order. I further move that the city attorney and the Department of Building Safety be requested to report with recommendations and the necessary resources to begin issuing A citations for violations of LAMC 91.8904 that are not corrected prior to the compliance dates of the LADBS order.
Second.
Mr. Coretts, rather, is...
Second by Mr. O'Farrell. I, Mr. Coretts. Any others, Mr. Buscayino? I'm sorry, say one more. It's co-presented by who, Mr. O'Farrell?
Mr. Coretts.
Okay, Mr. Coretts, and second by Mr. O'Farrell. Any others?
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one motion and moving clauses. I therefore move that the council instruct the Department of Building and Safety in consultation with the city attorney to prepare a report with the recommendations relative to the department's enforcement of Municipal Code Section 91.106.4.4.3, unfinished buildings or structures, and as much as there are nuisances, numerous, excuse me, and as much as there are numerous unfinished development projects citywide, which were issued building permits in some instances more than eight years prior, and causes the development project sites to become ISORs, and foremost, a disturbance to abutting property owners and neighborhood residents, and the feasibility of requiring a completion guarantee, sometimes referred to as a completion bond, which sets time limits to complete projects and thereby provide remedies for incomplete development projects citywide.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rue. Mr. Blumenfeld?
Thank you. I have two motions. The first one deals with our air quality. You know, we have had some of the worst air quality because of the fires recently. And the reality is, this is, because of climate change, is going to be continuing, and we need to have a real clear system of how we're going to deal with that. So the moving clauses are, I therefore move that the council instruct the Emergency Management Department in consultation with the Department of Wreck and Parks and General Services Department to prepare a plan and protocols to open certain city facilities during times of dangerous air quality that includes staffing, facility, and outreach needs. I further move that the council instruct the Emergency Management Department and the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority in consultation with the Department of Wreck and Parks, General Services Department, to prepare a report with recommendations on what additional city-owned sites could be opened up during emergencies that would better serve the unhoused population, and if hours can be expanded, as well as explore the private partnership to further, private partnerships to further address this issue.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any others, Mr. Blumenfeld?
Yeah, one other, and this deals with, it's also COVID-related, but it specifically deals with the LAUSD K through 12 schools not reopening and all the issues that that's causing and the inequality with access to communications technology and trying to figure out how we're going to get our kids back. And it's simply, I therefore move that the LA County Department of Public Health be requested to report to council on the roadmap for the Los Angeles Unified School District's reopening, including the scientific justification for delaying reopenings until mid-November. And I believe that was, Mr. Harris-Dawson was seconding that.
Mr. Harris-Dawson, can you confirm your second on this motion?
Confirming the second.
Thank you. Any others, members? Okay, what else is before us, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred, any announcements, Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues. So today marks the start of Latino Heritage Month. And as we all know, many of our celebrations have been inhibited by COVID-19. But typically, tonight, on the 15th of every September, we have a remarkable celebration honoring and commemorating the tradition of celebrating El Grito de Dolores, the celebration of Mexican independence. And, you know, while it would have been far easier, for sure, to bypass this because of the challenges that are presented by the pandemic, I want to really celebrate and thank my team, Felicia Rosco, Tranley, and Rosia Hernandez. They have worked just incredibly to help us celebrate and continue this celebration in a very meaningful way and in a way that assures that we can honor our community and all that it's deserving of to be celebrated during this difficult time. Tonight, we are going to be having El Grito, but it will be a televised or a streamed telethon that will raise money for those hardest hit by the pandemic. We know that the Latino community has been the hardest, most impacted by this pandemic. But those that don't have the immigration status that affords them the opportunities to get some of the federal and state relief that have been offered have been even, had greater impacts. And so tonight and through the course of Latino Heritage Month, which commences tonight, we are raising funds through this telethon in support of Cielo, which is a nonprofit organization that has an documented indigenous fund. And so I'm really proud of the collaboration, but I'm most proud of all of the acts that have come together to show their support in support of this mission to raise these critical funds, but moreover, to continue this really important tradition of celebrating El Grito and kicking off Latino Heritage Month. We are the largest population of Mexicans outside of Mexico City, and it's just been really wonderful to see how everyone has come together to adjust what has been a traditional way that we've celebrated and amended it to this new way of presenting it. Channel 4 and Telemundo will also be streaming on their social media outlets and their websites. But I want to encourage you all to please join us at www.elgrito2020.com. There you can contribute in support of Cielo, and you can also watch all the incredible performances that we have lined up, which include Los Tucanes de Tijuana, some are local favorites from La Santa Cecilia and Oso Matli and many, many more. And I want to thank my colleagues, Gil, Sadio, and Council President Martinez, and the mayor, for helping to assure that we continued this tradition by honoring the Grito with the reenactment of the civic ceremony that we, this year, is being conducted at Placito Olvera. And it's, it looks beautiful, everything has turned out really well, and I want to invite all Angelenos and anyone watching, please join us. Starts this evening at 6:30 with the pre-show. We've got some great music, and then 7 o'clock, the programming begins with all of the additional entertainment and segments. So, again, www.elgrito2020.com, and thank you, colleagues. It's, I hope you can join us this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, and thank you for making us part of this celebration. If anybody can do it and pull this off during COVID, it's you and your staff. So congratulations for all the hard work. Mr. Sadio, do you have an announcement?
I do have an announcement, I have a very important announcement. But before I do that, I want to commend Monica for her leadership and her vision on this matter. We could have easily bailed on this event, it would have been reasoned, or we could have done the foolish thing, as we witnessed the president, and go ahead and force an event. I'm sure many people would have come to participate, but it would have imperiled the community. And so we did something more than that. We rose above the challenges that confronted us. Monica, with all due respect, tremendous, tremendous shout-out to you for your vision and putting this together, your leadership. And then, of course, to your staff. We don't do anything without our great staff. Your staff was just consummate professionals. They acted like they've been doing this their whole lives, and they did a great job, and they've got great careers in the industry if they decide to go on into production in the future, so.
Don't give them any ideas, Gil.
There's other ideas, too. So I commend them. But tonight, I'm looking forward to the show tonight, and I'm well-prepared for it. Anybody who wants to join me, they're welcome. And then let me say something very special and personal. You all know my history, my family. My dad's side came north from Mexico and settled in Barstow, and my mom's side settled also in Barstow, California. And so my roots are deep in Barstow, and I have great memories. But when my family did move in the '50s to Los Angeles, my mom came, of course, with her brothers, and my Aunt Margaret. And I just have the fondest memories of visiting my uncle and my aunt over on First and Woods, particularly whenever there was a birthday, because my aunt would bake cakes and cupcakes and a lot of pastries that were not as familiar in my household. And so I always look forward to going over to see her. She's quite a brilliant woman. She's quite a brilliant woman, very outspoken, very smart and thoughtful, and just a joy to be around, really interesting, and so today is her birthday, and so I just wanted to make sure that, did a shout-out to Aunt Margaret, to my cousins Sharon, Danny, and just celebrate the great life that it's been for Aunt Margaret and being part of her family. So, happy birthday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Members, are there any other announcements? I do have a small announcement, the Environmental Climate Change and Environment Justice Committee will, scheduled at 1 o'clock, we'll go ahead and meet at 1:30 today. So 1:30 our scheduled meeting, thank you. Are there any adjourned motions? Okay, seeing none? Our meeting is adjourned, thank you.